Chief Delp, if you would.
No, there we go.
Get it recorded to the cloud, make sure.
It just popped up.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it's recording to the cloud and not his local device. Because we've had that before. All right. Well, then, then we are here. This is a council work session on today, May 3rd. With myself, Council President Wolf, Council Persons Bruger McNamara and Shrimp in attendance, as well as Police Chief Delp and the mysterious Mac who we believe is Barb. And are, we are here to discuss the plans that we saw last Monday regarding the proposed architect work for the, or the work that was proposed by the architect for the new community building updates. Now, with that whole mouthful, this session was planned largely because Council Person Benedetti had indicated they had concerns. And Barb has confirmed in the chat that yes, Mac is Barb. So now we know for certain. Yeah. So does anybody else? I mean, I think I can start to ask the questions that Council Person Benedetti had, but I know that if I do that, when he joins, we would just need to circle back around it. So does anybody else have thoughts on how to start this productively?
I don't, I don't. I think that we were having the chief on here because Tony, maybe there's other people who question the space allocation for the police department. If so, then maybe they could ask their question. But the main reason the chief's on is for, I thought Tony's initiative is I've heard the chief, personally, I've heard the chief speak on the rooms and the needs and et cetera. So I'm satisfied myself. So is anybody else feeling they had their own individual questions for the chief?
I just had one, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Brian, did you?
No, I was just saying that you had your hand up, so I was gonna bring it to you.
Well, thank you, sir. I just had just one real brief question. I know there was some debate over the presence of a family bathroom being turned into the reports room. I totally understand the need for a reports room. I just was wondering if there was any conceivable way that there could be any room in the police section where that could go and the family restroom could be reintegrated. Is there, would there be sufficient space from evidence or storage or something along those lines in your opinion?
The, the purpose of that reports room is to keep the public out of the building. So that when someone comes in to file a report or talk to an officer, an officer has a place where they can speak in private without going through the admin section or walking them all the way back to the police department. There's no lobby in the police department, you know, obviously, you know, under a a situation where we brought them to the police department, we'd be taking them into the police department. But if someone just walks in the front door, it's just nice to have a place. And, and let's say, for example, they come in, but they live in Columbus. And we have a Columbus officer come speak with them. They now have a place to go and speak to the Columbus officer. So that's the whole purpose of it. I get it. It'd be nice if we had a little more room there to put in a family bathroom or we turn both bathrooms into family bathrooms.
Right.
You know, that we're not supposed to.
Yeah, we, we can circle back on bathroom situation. You know, let's, let's, let, let's, let's get chiefs to, let's use chiefs' time as efficiently as we can. And to that end, Chief, I assume you have the same diagram that we, that we saw last Monday from the architect. So I think maybe for posterity and posteriorian for the record, posterity, posterity, pardon me, and the record. Can you just speak through the needs that are represented there?
I actually don't have that drawing. I have the one that was before that. That I marked up, but I will say that like in an earlier iteration of this drawing, the the processing area was at the front of the building up there. And I believe Council, Council Person Shrimp brought up the idea of the restroom and the processing area. And that is, she's absolutely right. That is something we need and there's no plumbing down at that end of the building. So, I mean, when, when I received this, I was told it was a concept. And like all these little changes and corrections and stuff would come when we actually went to a, an architectural drawing. But I wasn't real concerned with the way it was set up, just that there was, oh, perfect.
Yeah, I sent you a copy too, sir.
Thank you. Did someone share the screen? I was trying to get mine up to share the screen, but somebody, somebody was faster than me. Thank you, Eric.
So yeah, so as you can see, there's like the, the door of the processing area and and then the evidence room is right next to that, which is kind of what we needed. I think the earlier design had where the, the chief's offices, there was actually the entrance there that was the processing and then the lieutenant was the lieutenant's office was the evidence room. With this concept, other than the, the restroom issue, the whole idea was to have the supervisor be able to look out onto where the officers are working and stuff. But and like I said, it's all conceptual. There's definitely some things that, like in the earlier things in the evidence room, they had a window. And, you know, obviously we can't have a window in an evidence room. So, so yes, it was, it was definitely one of those things that needed to be changed. And they also had a window in the processing area, which, you know, that wouldn't help either. So those windows were taken out. There is a straight line into that storage room, which is, which is nice. But yeah, like I said, the workflow here, you know, you've got the workstations out there for the officers. You've got all the file cabinet storage, that work area. And of course, the, the locker rooms there for the officers to store their gear and stuff when they're not at work. So.
Sure. So while it is true that this is still conceptual, not, not final schematics or, you know, actual architectural elevations, that kind of stuff. The concept is usually what, what a project builds to, right? That's, this will be the idea that that starts, starts the rest of the process. So it is unfortunate that Council Person Benedetti isn't here to ask his own questions. But again, in an effort to be fair, to make certain that the questions are asked and, and answers are given. The three things that I recall that he was questioning, one was sort of from a square footage perspective. Right? He was looking at this drawing that we have up on the screen right now and asking, is it really necessary for our police department to have three police workstations and a lieutenant's office and a chief's office? Is that, is that the right amount? Is that more than you need? Is that less than you need?
I think it's probably the right amount for the size of this department. I, we spoke earlier about the, if I can move this, I'd really like to move you guys here and put this other screen.
Yeah.
Here we go. There we go. Now I can look at you. I couldn't see before because of the shared screen. So the I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought moving that stuff around.
It's about this, this, this size of the, of the space.
Square footage and the, now, now we may want to tap dance for one minute because Barb just put in the chat that her mayor Hughes, Council Person Benedetti will be on in a minute. So if we want to, I don't know, play the intermission song for, for 60 seconds to see if he really arrives. That might keep us from having to say the same thing twice while we're doing that. Here he is now. Okay. Excellent. Well, welcome, Tony or Council Person Benedetti. We were just really getting into our conversation with Chief Delp. I was doing my best to represent the questions that you had, starting with what I had heard you expressing was a concern with the square footage and number and type of workspaces that were laid out in this design for the police. Is that a, is that a fair, is that a fair summary of one of your questions?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so if we could let the chief Delp then speak to that.
So the, the way that this is set up right now, the workspace, one of those would be dedicated to the sergeant and then the other ones would be for day officers. So whatever officers are on duty. And I don't anticipate growth in the department. If we get a SRO for the new school, for the middle school, we'll have one more officer. But, you know, the majority of that officer will be paid by Westerville School. So, and we've talked about that in the past. But for nine full-time officers, one part-time officer or 10 full-time officers, this seems to be a good arrangement.
And to address a specific concern, a, a, a full office for the lieutenant. Is that, again, I'm trying to represent Tony's questions, but he's here now.
I guess I'm just trying to understand what duties does a lieutenant have that requires him to need an office?
So lieutenant is the second in command for the police department. As such, he is like, kind of like the vice principal of the school. He deals with discipline officers and, and working with officers, coaching them. But he needs a private space to engage those things. Additionally, he does a lot of administrative work that would require him to have workspace where he can leave things out. If, if he needs to leave the, the office and things are out in the open, he needs a way to secure that stuff and not have it be subject to privanize. But additionally, I think more importantly is that I think it's important to have professional workspace because it tends to generate professional people. And if you have this nicer workspace, it's going to promote that professionalism in the officers. So.
I guess the revelation for me here is that it requires two administrators to run and, and that being a chief and a lieutenant. To, so the lieutenant doesn't do any patrolling, Dorn doesn't do any patrol and he's solely working on, you know, administrative training, whatever it is. I mean, that's, that's the thing that I'm trying to wrap my head around is why we need two.
Actually, sir, we all patrol.
Okay.
I mean, we all have to patrol. There's not enough officers here for anybody to just sit on station doing admin work.
Okay.
But the answer that chief had already given that was that should the lieutenant or when the lieutenant needs to do that admin work, it is of the nature that if he needs to leave in a hurry, he needs to be able to secure it. Which is, which is why there's a lot, why it needs a door that can lock. Along with any human resources type conversation with subordinate officers.
Well, again, like I said, the revelation for me is that it takes two people to run the department. That's what.
I, I think that I, well, A, I think that our own history with, with our department has shown that it's good to have depth in the bench because at least in my time here in the village, Chief Delp is not our first or only police chief. And he was the depth of our bench and I'm glad to have had him. But I would also say that what you're talking about there is more the nature of the operation of our police force. And today, to be efficient in our conversation, we should really keep this conversation about the needs of the police force as it is today and how that relates to the building as proposed.
Well, yes, and well, I'll do my best to stay on that.
And I will do my best to rein you in whenever necessary.
You will.
So the, so the, the next question, again, Tony, I, I'm just trying to keep things moving and keep chief's time efficient. So the, I had counted three concerns. Or actually, now I'm just thinking two concerns that you'd had with the, the police space. The other was the presence of two showers, a men's shower and a women's shower. And so Chief Delp, I know that we don't have women on our force at this time, but I'm sure that that is something that we would, would surely, you know, change in the future. But the question is, do you see that as, you know, two showers as necessary?
You know, I'm kind of ambivalent about the showers. I think the showers are one of those things when we were told to come up with our things. It was once needs and wishes. And I think the, the showers were somewhere between needs and wishes. Can we do without showers? Sure. Would showers be nice to have? Yes. Because there are times when they're necessary. I don't know if, if there's a way to make a coed shower. That's, I don't know if that would be appropriate or possible. Certainly don't want people, you know, walking through the department in a towel to get to the shower.
Not what I would propose, but could I ask, you know, how many officers come in and change their clothes?
All of them.
All of them come in in street clothes and change their clothes?
Yeah.
Well, see, this is where, you know, I don't want to get into the specifics of, you know, how we go about doing this. But, or, you know, reducing them, you know, my thoughts are, you know, having a group, having a, a family shower, family restroom that has, you know, showers in the changing room and, you know, it's.
Well, I.
Again, that's where I just wanted to understand because, you know, or even that, I don't understand why they don't, you know, I was in the air force, I had to put on a uniform every day and I didn't go to the shop and put my uniform on. I came to work with my uniform on. You know, and I know that, you know, maybe people, officer don't want to leave their house in a uniform because they don't want anybody to know they're a police officer. I don't know what the thinking is behind not coming to work dressed is, but. Okay. I mean, that's the question I have, you know, one other question is, you know, how many people are, are, you know, changing their clothes here?
Well, that sounds like that's a hundred percent is what, what we just got.
You do it. There's, there's, nobody's coming in uniform. I think they're coming in about a half uniform, like they might have their uniform pants and boots. But then their shirt and everything else would be external vest. The, they keep their gear in lockers. So they come in, they get their gear, it's like put their gear on.
So, so locker room facilities definitely sounds to be a requirement.
That one's a need.
Yeah. And, and you know, I, I, I want to thank you for expressing that you feel like the showers live between need and, and want. But then in your answer, you also said that sometimes you need it, right? So even if it's not a need every day.
It's, it's one of those things where if they had it, they would use it. If they didn't have it, maybe they wouldn't. One of the things that was talked about was if space is available to incorporate some kind of exercise facility here and some officers would come in, work out, shower, get dressed and go to work. So that was kind of the thinking behind the showers.
Well, so and I, I'd ask a follow-up question because it was just to again, bring it into the record because it was part of the conversations we've had regarding showers in the past. And under current procedures, if in the course of their duties, one of our officers were exposed to what I would describe as biohazard, right? Any, any bodily fluid that, that isn't theirs or, you know, materials, liquid materials that are not known to be safe on their person, what's, what's the procedure today?
Well, at that point, it's pretty much a garden hose. And it's like, yeah, and you know, just you gotta hose it as best you can.
So I might suggest that there's a little more dignity to a shower than a garden hose, right?
Well, yeah, absolutely. But, but we have had situations. In 2018, we went into a home where there was a deceased person. Actually, two deceased people and they'd been in there for quite a while. And the, the ability to come back and, and maybe take a shower and put your clothes in a bag would have been very nice, very, at that time. So there, there are times when it's actually a need. And like I said, if they had it, they would probably use it. But as I said, it's one of those things where if, if a shower is the thing that's holding up the building of a building, I can do without it.
Yeah, I don't know that we're there at this moment, but we can.
We, I definitely think, you know, there's some wiggle room to say bathrooms are expensive. We'll do one shower room with a door that can be closed. And then, you know, if you hear the running water, just like at home, you don't run in to take a shower because you know someone's in there and people just wait turns.
I, I'd be curious to see if that actually saved us any money. But okay, Diana, it looked like you had something to say.
Yeah. No, I just, well, you saw my email and so I was just, if I just think that having a utility room that includes a shower and a slop sink and a toilet that could be used by someone who's in processing or by the police or by the dog, just to shower them off, just a real, a room that could be completely sanitized easily. You know, titled and all that. I think it would serve a lot of purposes. And if, as you say, there's no plumbing at the end with the processing, but I, I just wanted to get your opinion. I don't see any problem with flipping, like say, put the shower where the police chief is and move the police chief down at the other end, for example, I'm just. I would think that to get it closer to the, where the rest of the plumbing, where they prefer to do it would be acceptable. Would it be?
Well, that's what I was saying. One of the earlier drawings had the processing room at that end. And the chief's office down in the bottom right corner and the lieutenant's office next to that. And if, if we're gonna put a, and I, I do agree that there should be a restroom attached to the processing area. And that would be up there where the plumbing, closer to the plumbing. So that's something that needs to be definitely discussed with the, with the architects when we get to the planning stage.
And, and since this is, and since it's all a new addition, I would think the outside door could easily be moved up to where the processing.
Yeah, that's where it was before. It was, yeah. I don't know what prompted the move to put it down at the other end and, and do that. I don't know. I just, I just looked at the drawings.
Okay.
Can I ask chief, what, you know, what is the processing room for?
That's to bring arrestees into.
Well, that here, this is another one that I need to understand. You know, we don't have a holding cell. When you arrest somebody, isn't the process to get them down to Franklin County as quick as possible?
Well, it depends. If we arrest somebody for, let's say, OBI. There's a lot of paperwork that has to be done. We take them, we take them to another agency for the task, usually Blendon or Westerville. But then we bring them back here and we have someone come pick them up. I mean, we don't have to take anyone to jail and just put them behind bars. If they've just had too much to drink, we'll call them a sober ride to come pick them up and take them home. But there is paperwork that needs to be done and that takes, that takes a while. So we bring them back here. If we arrest someone and we have to take them to jail, we bring them back here. We prepare the charges, we do the arrest sheet and get everything ready to go before going down to the jail. So we're not sitting in the jail with everyone else working on paperwork.
Well, I've been through the process, chief, and it's wasn't done exactly like that. When I was arrested for DUI. All right, thanks.
So in, in other words, to paraphrase, to, to repeat back so that I make sure I understood what you said, that processing room would be used when we have arrested an individual, right? And if we've arrested them without the intention of the taking them to jail or down to county, they would stay there while paperwork is done and they have a sober ride, what have you. Or if they are going down to, to county, they would be there while we prepare the paperwork so that we are on site and in our village for the most, through the preponderance of time, right? That we want them here while they do their paperwork and then they can go down to county and have a much more efficient handoff with all the work having been done already.
That is, that is spot on correct. And you've seen the, you see in our processing area here at the current station, which is a bench with a couple of eyeballs to it. I mean, we do that here now. But they're setting out in that office area and it's not, it's not secure from the rest of the building. And it's, could be problematic if somebody decided that they didn't want to be cooperative.
Right.
You get handcuffed to it. You got much to be cooperative.
Well, I, I can imagine a lot of ways to be uncooperative while handcuffed. So anyways, moving on, Council Person Benedetti, were there any specific areas within the police use portion of the building that you had questions on?
The, that is all with regards to the police, police chief's input.
Okay, then what I, to sum up what I heard, and I think that there was a general consensus on, is that we could potentially do without the showers with the idea that there would be an addition of a utility room with a shower. So that it could, it could be used to shower more than just people. It would be more of an emergency shower slash utility space and regular restroom for people who are maybe in processing. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to shower in the processing area, but there definitely should be a restroom for those occasions when we do have to take a urine sample from someone. That has to be done in a, in a, in a secure.
In a secure area with, with a toilet.
So that's, I said, and, and thank you to Council Person Shrimp for pointing that out because it's spot on correct. We need to have that.
Okay, I like it then. At this time, does anybody else have additional questions? Or require additional input from Chief Delp?
Yeah, I, I, I will get my turn here. So, you know, chief obviously needs office. I understand why lieutenant does because they're handling various people's secure files as well. And then, of course, we have the, you know, a, a pretty large work area plus the reports office. How many officers do we generally have on duty at any given time?
I think we're from two to three, depending on the time of day and day of the week.
And is there, and the answer to this is probably just no, but I'll say it anyway to be dumb. Is there any shifts where the chief lieutenant or sergeant aren't there? If that makes sense, is there always a chief lieutenant or sergeant on duty? Or are there times when there's just officers?
There could be times when there's just officers, yes. Like the, right now our sergeant works as six P to two A, so he touches second and third shift. And, but there are days when he has to cover third shift because of training or sick or some other type of reason while, why there's no one here or an officer's off. So he would have to work that 10 to six, 10 P to 6A shift. So yeah, there's, there could be times when there's, when the sergeant's not here and it's just officers.
And how often is, I guess, how often are there more than one officers in the building right now? I guess, how often are there more than one officers in the building during an average shift? Or are you mostly out on the streets?
Mostly on the street.
Alright, because that's, you know, I'm I'm leading up to my, we have three workspaces down here. Two offices that are and can be secured. Um, I understand not necessarily wanting to walk someone through everything, but it looks to me by the time you get to the administrative office desk and say, I need to file a report, somebody did something to my house. And the officer walks up to get you, it doesn't look like it's that intrusive a walk to walk down and sit down at one of those open office spaces, or if it's something a little more s- sensitive, use the chief's or lieutenant's office. And then walk them back out because it looks like it's a hallway and then the stairwell. Or even if there was a buzzer on the back door down there where the work area, someone could buzz and whoever was on duty could come to the door and say, can I help you? And they could be buzzed in and say, yeah, I need to file a report, someone stole my kid's bike. And there, to me, it just seems like a lot. I'm sorry, Diane.
I'm sorry, it's not accessible. There's stairs.
There's a, there's a, an accessibility issue.
Gotcha. And this back door is not gonna have a wheelchair accessible either.
Well, it it would be really um, not a good thing for uh, you, it's just not a good thing for a resident to be going into anywhere near the processing area. Because you never know, you never know, so um, generally not, generally not done. It's generally the, the people have to come, the, the police really have no the police really have no formal entrance and uh, you know, so i- it's, then people have got to come through the main door during business hours. And they have to, you know, be checked in.
Which is, I assume what we do now.
Well, right, yeah, because I don't know that the chief has anybody wandering back to the police area, but um, they might if if the, if the office is up front or closed, we, I don't know how good a job we do it.
As I said, I'm not wandering back. I assumed you would check in at the front desk.
Right.
And either way, there's not going to be an officer up in that area at any time. Just waiting for someone.
No, it's, they're gonna check in with the clerk.
Gonna call down to the police and someone's gonna walk up. I was just saying, then someone could be walked down.
Or we'll, or we'll drive in park and walk through the front door.
Yeah. Um, and then, you know, you don't want it near processing, but you'll know if you have someone there and say, well, we can't take you down and take your report right now. How about we meet in this conference room? Um, for those times that someone is trying to file a report at the same time that we have someone being processed. I just think there, there's, there's more than enough room for taking reports without the added reports office. Because I'm, you know, just fighting for my family restroom.
Well, I think, I think you could have the family restroom. I, I don't think anyone has been so far opposed to taking the rest, two restrooms that are by the lobby and turning them into two family restrooms.
Right.
That's my, that's what I'm.
I, I would suspect you could even make four family restrooms out of that space.
It's twenty twenty-one. Let's have some, let's have some gender neutral bathroom, you know?
For, you know, commode uh, sink changing table bathrooms. I think that would fit in that space and still leave room for the processing room as it is.
Uh, I would agree.
I mean, that was my big concern is, you know, there's just like six workspaces for, you know, a ten person office. It seems like we brunch some of it down a bit, or even take the giant workspace here where you have the two desks plus the third desk plus extra space and maybe
Yeah.
You know, if you squeeze some of that over, you squeeze one of these outside rooms in there and that's just a few less square footage of built space.
The, the difficulty that I would foresee in that is that you, you have to plan for maximum capacity. Right? Not minimum capacity because you can't operate unsafely when they do in fact need all three butts in those seats. There will be a time when that comes up and if they aren't, there aren't the three workspaces there, then then what do they do?
I, I'm not sure that that time would ever come up.
Yeah, I, you know, I think, I think you've rolled enough dice, I think you've rolled enough dice to know that a hundred comes up on a D one hundred every now and again.
Yeah, but I mean, we, we gotta ask Chief if there's ever been a time that he needed four, four officers working at desks.
Well, not, not, not four, just, just those front three because the other two would be locked and controlled by their constituent officer.
I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that if, if something that bad's happening and Chief's not there, I would want to know why.
So there would, there could be times, I mean, it would, it would, it would take nothing but a, a a tornado to come through this village and everybody would be here. So um, yeah, it's the, you know, Council President Wolf's right. There, you gotta plan, you gotta plan for the future. Um, that space can be reappropriated if we need it to be. If we don't need three workstations, we could obviously um, you know, create something else in that space, but the idea is to think um, ten, fifteen years into the future. We don't know what would happen. Um, we may need storage space. I don't know.
I, I agree that pushing, pushing ever smaller will only uh, will only mean that it probably won't meet our needs by the time it's done.
Yeah.
Right? I think we've all seen uh, road, road projects where they've built the road to the spec at the time of the design. Took them ten years to build it and by the time it's done, it's already full of cars because they built it to ten years ago spec and not looking far enough ahead. I think if we.
With, with us, I think we uh, can pretty certainly say there's not gonna be any new uh, homes or area to patrol in the village and that we're not gonna, you know, balloon up to a twenty person police force.
That's never gonna happen. You're right, Mark.
Because, because we're, 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 I think we, I think we have every scrap of space used we can. Unless we get rid of the basketball court and put it in an apartment building.
I uh, while I agree that more homes isn't the case, I couldn't foresee that there would be a time where we would say that we need more patrolling. Right? I, I, that would be foolhardy to say that I couldn't, I couldn't imagine a scenario where you know, the consensus of the village was that we wanted more police presence here.
Yeah, but that's police and cars, not police at desks.
But police and cars need a place to go when they nabbed, nabbed the bad guy.
Or the bad girl.
Pardon me, yes, gender, generally, when they have nabbed the bad person.
Well, those were my concerns.
Alright. Alright, then, does anybody else have concerns to, to address with Chief Delp? Going once, going twice. Uh, with that said, I think Chief Delp, I, you know, I, I don't need you to go, but you, you know, you, you're welcome to hang out, but you know, I think you probably have better uses of your time.
Thank you, but um, as it stands right now, I'm the one we uh, uh.
Oh, that's right, you're the one recording, so you're.
I'm just gonna mute my microphone and enjoy the rest of the meeting.
There you go.
Thanks for clearing some stuff up.
Absolutely, and may, maybe it'll wrap around to, to police space again, who knows? Okay, so uh, what were the other concerns that we wanted to address? The only other one that I have uh, recollection of was that Tony was talking about sort of flipping the floor plan uh, to have the police on the other side of the building.
That's the big one for me. I'm there, you know, and, you know, unfortunately for you guys, I can take a look at a blueprint and a plan and, and, and look at how difficult it is to accomplish what they're trying to accomplish here, you know, and when I said that this is the worst plan so far, I, I think it is the worst plan so far, when it, with regards to working with the, the building that you have. And, you know, my, like I said, the, the first problem I had and all, and the other plans that I had seen had the police on the other side of the building. And I see the police department being pushed out closer and closer to the lake, the part of the property that is being used by the community the most. And uh, you know, like was mentioned is that here we got the main processing room where we're gonna be bringing in criminals and it's right there beside the lake where people are fishing and, you know, trying to have a cookout or whatever. You know, so I, I, and, you know, putting, you know, guys, I can go on and on about what I don't like about this, this drawing. And that it is so difficult, if you're gonna put bathrooms in an existing concrete floor. First off, I don't know how they're gonna be able to get the drains from those toilets to the existing plumbing in the existing building. Or they're gonna have to, or they're gonna have to uh, put a whole new connection to the, the sewer line out to the street. I look at a set of steps, the going down to the, to the uh, you know, the garage area, the police area. For some reason, he has that being moved, just, you know, he wants to move the door there for some reason. Because the door is in the opposite position than it appears on the drawing. And then he wants to cover up the steps going down to the basement, not use any of the basement except for some maybe future use or some storage. And, you know, cover up that, that step and then put another set of steps outside. So you, the only way you can get to that to the basement is through the outside?
The idea about the toilets is a really good idea. I never thought of that because that those bathrooms are gonna be in the old ambulance bay. That's a really good idea, Tony.
You have to saw cut all the concrete to the toilet, to the showers, all of that work. You know, is over and above, you know, it's just much harder to install plumbing into an existing concrete floor.
Now, did that old ambulance bay have a drain pipe going through it?
The sink, there's a sink and a sink, you can make, and it does, it makes the drop over to the because the problem in the building, the existing building, is that the, the line going out to the street is four feet off of the basement floor. You know, and if you look at the, in the, the garage is like four feet down below the floor, you know, it's half of, half a floor down. You know, so there is enough, there is enough uh, uh, slope to the drain to get a sink to the existing, but to get a floor drain with toilets and showers, I don't see how you can do it without putting in a, a whole new sewer line. You know, so, you know, I don't, my opinion of this drawing is that there wasn't very much uh, thought into trying to work with what you had. And to me, it's like making it as difficult as possible. Up in the records room, you're gonna have to, that, I don't know whether he knows this, but that whole building is concrete block walls and a concrete floor. You know, it's not wood. You know, and, and he's got cu- saw cutting out a whole wall in the corner. You know, you're gonna have to do some saw cutting, you know, there's no way around cutting into the concrete block, but in some areas. But uh, like I said, this draw, this, this plan, it's like they didn't really care too mu- the only thing that he has going for him is he did put two bathrooms where the existing plumbing's at. You know, other than that, there wasn't a lot of consideration into how difficult it's gonna be to build this. And why we have a storage room, you know, I understand he needed it, you know, to, to uh, to block off the steps and put the steps outside to the basement in order to get this to work, but to me i- i- this could have been done a whole lot differently. It just doesn't make.
Well, you know, I, I don't know that anybody would say that it couldn't be done differently because you can do anything differently. I I, I personally find it hard to believe that the architects are unaware of the materials and the building processes necessary to execute on this though.
So here's the thing, and this is, you know, maybe I'm showing my, my bias towards architects. And you know, they're right up there with lawyers and used car safety and that they, they're their, their concerns about how easy it is to do something, that's like found at the bottom of the list, you know, for uh, you know, a project like this. You know, but you guys, you know, I'm just one person here. Everybody thinks this is great and let's go and see how this works out.
Well, it sounds.
Tired of fighting because I've got other battles to, to, to fight other than this.
It, it sounds like we, we have Tony's uh, Tony's approval then at this point.
No, you don't. I'll be voting no.
Okay.
Whenever my chance to vote would be no.
Fair, fair enough. Uh, alright, does anybody else have any concerns that they wanted to speak to? And, you know, I think.
Is anybody receptive to moving, the one thing that is moving the darn police away from the lake? I mean, that's, you know, and the parking lot on the front, you know, the parking lot, I don't know what your guys' opinion of having a parking lot that backs out onto Minerva Lake Road, I think that's ridiculous. I'd like to see the parking lot up over beside the building and have some parking, you know, a little bit more parking. And there's not gonna be, and if we keep this, you know, the, the way it's designed right now, we're moving the parking lot even further over towards the lake to add a couple more cars uh, or a couple more spaces for police cars to park. That's why when I pull up to the community building, you know, I'd like to see people enjoying the lakes and not the police department. Right there where the lakes are at. I mean, they're like ten, probably not even ten feet from the lake is where the parking lot's at. I mean, it just, the con- the conceptually, that's what I probably hate the most about it. I can deal with all the well, I can't, but with all the, you know, how difficult it is to build this plan. But the overall concept of having the police where they're at and not on the other side of the building is my biggest gripe.
If, if I could just intercede for just a moment, the architects also um, factored in the consideration of some thinning of the vegetation, the honeysuckle, that kind of stuff on the side where the community has, where the community half is, in addition to that, you know, deck. I, I may be the only one thinking this, but I think that has the potential to be a, a very nice view. But again, that's just my opinion.
No, no, I think that'll be a great view. I think.
Better view if it were put for, closer to the lake.
In, in, you know, to address my one thought that, to Tony's suggestion to move the police to the other side. Uh, I believe that with the slope of the land over there, um, it may be uh, substantively more grading. So I think that the, what we would need to weigh is the expense of moving land versus the uh, you know, whatever other savings and construction process there may be.
I don't know what you're referring to.
If I may, there's, there's more groundwork on that side, more earthwork. We can get the architect's opinion and get it back to council members. On the which side, one of the reasons that we're on this side now is because we're trying to obviously be most efficient with the dollars of the village. Uh, this side was estimated to be least expensive as far as the work being done. Now, we can get the official opinion email from the architect to kind of discuss his concerns. Uh, and we can certainly distribute that to council.
I think that would be a reasonable request.
Tony, if you give me and Chipper a couple hours with some, with some saws for that honeysuckle, I can make you a nice view.
Well, I could made you a better view without doing anything if we moved it.
Well, I, I would like to say that uh, just um, I, I understand from the mayor also that this is, was of the different designs that was tried, this one was the, the least expensive. So in terms of dollars, as um, Eric mentioned. Um, but I will say that in all of the original facility workshops, we had absolutely everyone wanted the community building on the side. absolutely everyone wanted the community building on the side. That is uh, now the police, uh, a- absolutely everybody wanted that. And so, um, although I'm you know, as far as if, if we have consensus to move forward, then, then I'm going to vote to move forward. However, I just wanted to, to make that clear that um, there'll be a lot of people who might be not quite persuaded right now, they might be persuaded. I mean, I'm, I'm a gardener, so I'm with uh, David on this, I mean, you can you can make a space, I mean, just because it's not the space, it's always been there for the last forty, fifty, sixty years. That doesn't mean that you can't make a new space and, and have that new view and that new space uh, work out even better than you thought, so there's always a, a possibility there. Um, but uh, I um, I guess I would have I would have liked to see, I would have liked to see what the uh, uh, design was that, at, that flipped it and that where the, the main problem is, is we're keeping the new, we're keeping the existing building because it's, it's way more expensive to tear it down and start from scratch. And it's also more expensive because we're not starting on a field someplace and, you know, where there's absolutely no obstructions, so that's al- already uh, adding to the, the expense of doing it. So we have a lot of challenges to keeping it where it is, which was another wish uh, for everybody, so um, but um, I don't know, I, I guess, I guess that's all I wanted to point out. The main challenge is that this is a two, if this were a single story home, our community building in the first place, it would be a hell of a lot more options, it's the damn stairs and the fact that it's staggered the way it is, two different ways that make this space so hard to adapt.
Okay. So do we, uh, where, where are we now and what else do we need to discuss? I think that the ultimate goal here was to get a comfort level that we could as, as a council, let the administration know that we are comfortable with moving forward. Right now, it sounded like uh, Mr. Fisher had suggested that we could get a, you know, a, a letter from the architect with sort of a a rough estimation of the cost difference of moving the police to the other side. I think that's a reasonable ask. Beyond that, uh, you know, we have, uh, in this conversation, we've talked through the police space. We've talked about uh, adding a, a bathroom and sort of reworking that space so there was a bathroom near uh, processing. Uh, we have talked about converting the bathrooms in the public area from to a men's room and a women's room to family restrooms. Beyond that, is there anything anybody else needs to discuss before we are comfortable with directing the mayor to move forward?
Well, I'm a little confused on, um, if we add the, the, the bathroom and shower in the police area, would we be removing the bathroom showers and maybe making those locker rooms a little smaller and freeing up some space? I think Or would this just be adding without taking anything cuz we're already what, four million or four hundred thousand or so over our proposed budget?
So, if I may, real quick, Mark, so we, we obviously have to have the architect draw it up, anything that's within the envelope, right? As you see in front of
Oh, yeah.
It's just a matter of finalizing the building design for bidding, right? What the actual numbers are, are not completely known quantity, I can simply tell you that tell you that, hey, if you remove more plumbing, it will save you, as plumbing is one of your most expensive per square foot costs of any construction, right? So if you're, if you're minimizing some area or you're combining them, probably it's minimally, or it's a most awash, right? And, and, or minimally awash and most you're, you're making some savings. So with the plumbing's already there, you're already paying for most of the cost to go to that spot, right? So it's more reworking the actual design. And I would say, look, the biggest change, for example, would be if there was a decision to go from one side, you know, moving one side of the envelope to the other side in which you have more earthwork that comes in the cost, so I think that's a legitimate uh, like, like Brian was saying, a legitimate ask to kind of get an idea of what that might be, is it a hundred thousand, fifty thousand? The architect may simply be able to say, look, we know it's gonna cost you more money, right? That's why I suggested over here. So I will get his opinion back to you on that, but anything as far as details of any of these areas, it has to be looked at by the architect, it has to be redrawn. Uh, we're just put out the bid anyways.
Of course, but no, my, my, my question, and I don't believe the, and I could be wrong, are there facilities on that lower level, I've never, I, I think I once was down there. Are those facilities where we have the locker room, existing restroom facilities that have already been piped and plumbed and everything?
I mean, that's where the police are now.
No, there's nothing.
There is not.
So that, everything we do down here is new build, that's why I was thinking, do we consolidate some?
Ho- hold up, so the, so if we're talking about the downstairs on, on the lower grade on the east side of the stairs there where the existing bay is, there is some plumbing down there, it is in the form of a sink, there is already plumbing. Now regardless of where we go on site, or we go on site, plumbing has to be redone to meet the current needs, right? It doesn't matter, you're gonna have to redo stuff, so.
Gotcha.
Where the current locker room is, is in the basement and there is no, there's, utilities are down there, but there's no bathroom.
Pipes, no, it's not, pipes come top, you're, you're underneath, so there's no sink, but the pipes and everything are there, you can add things, right? It's much cheaper to add things than to cut in and make things, so if you wanted to add a restroom, you could right? Cuz it's already there, it's different if you had a box, you know, that was feet, many feet away from where pipes were and you had to redig pipes and add them in and plumb everything, right? It's different.
No, I was just curious cuz of Diane's suggestion and that Delft, Chief Delft seemed to like, you know, if we're, if we're adding more down here, are we gonna take some away, I guess would be my question. And I'm not quite sure what we decided on that.
I think, I think we, we need to work it.
I, I don't think we decided how that would be, it's just that we would, that would work on it, work on proposing something.
And I do apologize, although we were speaking about the basement currently where the police are at.
Well, yeah, that's what I thought too. And there's nothing, there's nothing there.
Yeah. No, cuz I don't, I don't, you're like, well, okay, I'm kinda satisfied and say like, oh, here it is and we added more stuff and then it probably, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, we're gonna vote, it doesn't need too many people to vote yes for it to move forward.
Well, it needs four. Technically. Four, four people.
Four, alright, so uh, to that regard, do we need anything else at this time other than the response from the architect that we've just asked Eric to get for us? Anyone? Okay, then, uh, Eric, do you have any idea of a timeframe for that?
Uh, I will reach out tomorrow, sir, and hopefully I'll have it back to you pretty quick.
Alright, then we will look for that, and once we have that, maybe another uh, brief conversation, uh, and then we know that we can move forward.
Work sessions is Saturday.
Yep, that's the plan. Alright, uh, then unless anybody else has something for this uh, this meeting, I think we're done. Going once. Going twice. So, everybody have a wonderful night.